Okay, good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin, Cerulo, Dweck, Gold, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. And before we get to today's agenda, I want to go over a few new items and events related to the Department of City Planning's work. First off, I would like to thank the City Council for their vote to approve the Redhook Coastal Resiliency Project. Using funding from FEMA, this significant infrastructure improvement will tie together natural, topographic high points and a variety of design elements like roller gates and flood walls to provide protection from sea level rise and future storms for the entire neighborhood. Not only that, the project will also feature a major expansion to the Brooklyn waterfront greenway for New Yorkers to enjoy. Moving to our neighborhood planning work, the Department of City Planning recently released its draft zoning framework for the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. Based on over a year of public collaboration and feedback from thousands of New Yorkers, this plan would build on the strengths of this dynamic Queens neighborhood to enable over 11,000 new homes, including around 3,000 permanently income-restricted affordable homes through mandatory inclusionary housing. The plan also looks to contribute to the local economy with nearly 1.5 million square feet of new commercial space and nearly 15,000 square feet of industrial space. With tailored approaches for each part of this transit-accessible neighborhood, we're ready to move ahead toward an even brighter, stronger future for Jamaica, one that unlocks it's truly limitless potential. After unveiling the draft zoning framework at our successful town hall on June 13, we announced three zoning deep dives to offer New Yorkers further opportunities to learn more about the plan. We held the first one last Thursday and have two more coming up this week focused on industrial areas on June 25 and major corridors on June 27. To join and learn more about this ongoing planning process, please visit jamaicaplan.nyc. Moving to City Planning's other planning process in Queens, I encourage New Yorkers to join us and Councilmember Julie Wan at tonight's Long Island City Neighborhood Plan Town Hall at CUNY Law School, starting at 6:30 PM. This is a great opportunity to get involved and review draft strategies on housing, jobs, infrastructure, resiliency, and much more. You can learn more and register at licplan.nyc. And while it's still an ongoing process, I'd like to express my deep appreciation to all the community boards who've taken the time to consider and offer substantive feedback on City of Yes for housing opportunity as we approach the end of their official review period. We know it's a significant proposal and we're dedicated to a robust engagement process, so I want to make sure that everyone saw that we put out a frequently asked question document and short video about some of the topics that we've heard the most from across the city. And of course, huge thanks to the entire Department of City Planning team who have now assisted with more than 150 meetings, 150 community board meetings in the past two months. So thank you to all of them. Moving to today's agenda, we're beginning with one of the biggest life science projects in New York City's history, the Science Park and Research Campus, also known as Spark in Kips Bay in Manhattan. Led by the New York City Economic Development Corporation, this first-of-its-kind life sciences career and education hub will bring over 2 million square feet of space dedicated to a mix of commercial life sciences uses, New York City Health and Hospitals, the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, CUNY, New York City Public Schools, retail, and publicly-accessible open space. New York City has long been a leader in life sciences, and this vital investment in education, jobs, healthcare, and public space will help us continue to run up the score. Thanks to years of great planning and collaboration, Spark will make its mark as an innovative, state-of-the-art project that will pay dividends for the neighborhood, city, and region for decades to come. After we look at Spark, we're going to move just across the street to learn about Innovation East at 455 First Avenue. This proposal by the New York City Economic Development Corporation is also seeking to revamp the New York City Department of Mental Health and Hygiene Public Health Laboratory into a modern life sciences multipurpose building that will include lab space and ground-floor retail. Kips Bay is one of the key life science hubs for the entire city, and with projects like Spark and Innovation East, we're looking to ensure its continued success. Next up is the certification to start ULC of 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue in Windsor Terrace, Brooklyn. This project includes two new residential developments that would create nearly 250 homes in total, of which about 60 would be permanently income-restricted affordable. The two buildings would be a five-minute walk from the southwest corner of Prospect Park and the northern entrance of Greenwood Cemetery, giving these residents plenty of green space options as well as public transit access via the F and G trains at 15th Street Prospect Park and the B61 bus. From there, we'll head to Mott Haven in the Bronx to learn about a proposed mixed-use development with nearly 90 homes, around 20 of them permanently income-restricted affordable, as well as commercial and community facility space. The site, located at 438 Concord Avenue, is less than two blocks away from St. Mary's Park and a short walk to the 6th train at East 143rd Street. We will then hear details on the conversion of 10 Rockefeller Plaza in Midtown Manhattan. This application is seeking a special permit to turn parts of the building, including some of the ground-floor cellar, subcellar, and floors 7 to 16, from commercial uses to hotel uses. The resulting hotel would contain 136 rooms that would be steps away from Rockefeller Center and nearby entertainment and tourist spots like 30 Rock and Radio City Music Hall. So, lot to do today. Let's get it started, Sarah. The floor is now yours. We'll kick it off. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 24, 2024. The time is 1:07 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments, a special permit, disposition of city-owned property, site selection and acquisition, and a city map amendment in Manhattan, Community District 6. Our presenter is Ally Song.
Hi, Ally, welcome.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks. Is this screen? I don't think it's... Oh, I got it. Sorry. This is a public application by the New York City Economic Development Corporation, or EDC, the Department of Administrative Services, or DECAST, and the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, or OCME, to facilitate a new life sciences and education campus at 425 East 25th Street in the Kips Bay neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District 6. The applicants are requesting several actions. EDC is seeking a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment to MAP-MI-H, and two special permits related to laboratory use and bulk waivers. EDC and DECAST are jointly seeking a disposition of city-owned property and an acquisition of real property interest for a New York City Health and Hospitals facility. EDC, DECAST, and OCME are jointly seeking site selection and acquisition for an OCME facility. In a related action, Spark pedestrian bridge city map change, EDC is seeking a city map change to de-map an existing pedestrian bridge over FGR Drive. This slide shows an aerial view of the surrounding area with north at the top of the slide. The development site highlighted here in purple is located at 425 East 25th Street, bounded by First Avenue to the east, a de-mapped portion of East 26th Street to the north, FDR Drive to the west, and East 25th Street to the south. The built character of the area is comprised primarily of institutional uses, especially life sciences uses, along with a few mixed-use and residential buildings. Directly north of the development site is Bellevue Hospital and the Hearst Center for Forensic Sciences, which is an OCME facility. Directly south of the site is the VA Hospital Campus. Northeast of the site is the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Public Health Laboratory at 455 First Avenue, which is outlined here in blue and is the subject of a separate zoning application, which I will be presenting after this. This slide shows the area map with north at the top of the slide. The proposed development site outlined here in purple is currently zoned R8. Most of the surrounding area, which is defined as the area within 600 feet of the site, is also located in an R8 district. C25 overlays are mapped along First Avenue on the western side, across the street from the development site. East of the development site, across the FDR, there's the C27 district, and in the southeast corner of the surrounding area, there's an M11 district. You can see on this map that the surrounding area is primarily characterized by institutional uses, which are shown in blue. Just across the FDR is the Waterside Plaza mixed-use development, which is shown in orange. It can be accessed from the East 25th Street... It can be accessed from East 25th Street through an existing pedestrian bridge over the FDR, which is highlighted in yellow and is partially mapped on the development site. Open spaces in the area include Arthur Levy Playground just south of the development site and Bellevue South Park, just one block northeast of the site. The nearest subway stop is the 28th Street subway stop, which is located four blocks west and two blocks north of the development site and provides access to the 4 and 6 trains. There are several buses that run in the surrounding area, including the M15, the M15 SBS, the M9, and the M34A SBS bus. The development site is located within a growing life sciences corridor along First Avenue in Kips Bay, which includes many existing life sciences, medical, and academic uses, including the NYU Langone Medical Center, the Alexandria Center, Bellevue Hospital, the OCME Hearst Center, NYU's Colleges of Nursing and Dentistry, and the VA Hospital, among others. As mentioned previously, later today, I will be presenting another life sciences development application, catty-corner from the Spark development at 455 First Avenue. The development site is located on a part of Lot 100 of Block 962. In the diagram on the bottom left, you can see the bounds of the existing zoning lot in yellow, which includes Bellevue Hospital and the OCME Hearst Center, in addition to the development site. The development site is outlined in red. Eventually, the applicant plans to subdivide the development site into a separate zoning lot. The development site has an area of about 207,000 square feet and currently houses the City University of New York, or CUNY's Hunter College Brookdale Campus, and the de-mapped portion of East 26th Street. In the next few slides, I'm going to show some photos of the development site and its surrounding context. The first image on this slide shows a view looking southeast on First Avenue and East 26th Street towards the development site. The second photo shows the view looking north along First Avenue from the intersection with East 25th Street. These photos show the condition of the de-mapped former East 26th Street. The one on the left shows the view looking west towards First Avenue, and the one on the right shows the view looking east towards the FDR. These show... These photos show the con... Oh, sorry. Here, the image on the left shows the view southwest on FDR Drive looking towards the northeast corner of the development site. The image on the right shows a view looking northwest from the end of East 25th Street next to the FDR. Here, the first image shows a view of the pedestrian bridge looking west from East 25th Street, and the second image shows a view of the development site from East 25th Street looking east. So, the applicants are proposing a 1.8 million zoning square foot Science Park and Research Campus to be built on the development site. The campus is proposed to contain three buildings and a publicly-accessible open space with a retail kiosk. The height of the proposed development's maximum zoning envelope varies from 500 feet along First Avenue on the western side of the block to 370 feet along FDR on the eastern side of the block. The rendering on the right is for illustrative purposes only. Spark Kips Bay is the result of a collaboration between the City of New York and the State of New York to fund and realize a campus that enhances jobs and education opportunities in the life sciences sector. Spark has plans to complement and build upon the existing life sciences cluster in Kips Bay. The proposed development has shaped... Been shaped by EDC's master planning process, which created a vision for how all of its programs could be arranged into a unified campus. This is an illustrative diagram of the Spark development and its program. The two towers on the western side of the block are referred to as Buildings B1 and B2 and are proposed to contain commercial life sciences labs, as well as space for health and hospitals, and the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. The easternmost building, labeled Building A, is planned to contain space for CUNY and a new public high school. In addition, Spark seeks to enhance the public realm through a number of improvements. These include a new 0.6-acre publicly-accessible open space, pedestrian safety improvements, a redesign of the pedestrian bridge over the FDR to provide ADA accessibility, and coastal resiliency infrastructure. Here you can see a site plan of the proposed development. The life sciences towers, or Buildings B1 and B2, are located closer to First Avenue. They're separated by a two-way through-block driveway connecting East 25th Street to the de-mapped East 26th Street. B1 and B2 are proposed to be connected by two sky bridges, and B2 is planned to be connected to the existing OCME Hearst Building to the north through another sky bridge over the de-mapped East 26th Street. The educational campus in Building A is located closer to FDR Drive. All three buildings wrap around a mid-block publicly-accessible open space located along East 25th Street. The open space contains a one-story retail pavilion and will connect to a new replacement bridge over the FDR. The following slides will walk through each of the proposed buildings. So, first, starting with Building B1, this building fronts on First Avenue and is proposed to contain space for H&amp;H's outpatient care and training center on the lower floors with commercial life science space above in the tower portion. The life science use would include wet labs, dry labs, research and development, and space for collaboration. The diagram on the right shows the proposed development in a section facing north along East 25th Street with First Avenue on the left and FDR Drive on the right. The proposed program in Building 1 will be contained in a tower with a total floor area of about 667,000 zoning square feet, of which about 175,000 square feet will be for community facility use, about 488,000 square feet for office and laboratory use, and about 500 square feet for retail use. Maximum building envelope for Building B1 is shown in this section in dark blue. It has a maximum envelope height of 500 feet. Building B2 is a mid-block tower proposed to contain space for commercial life sciences within the tower and space for OCME's Forensic Pathology Center, or FPC, within its base. The life sciences portions within Buildings B1 and B2 will be connected through two sky bridges within the development site. The Manhattan Forensic Pathology Center, or FPC, is currently located at OCME's main offices at 520 First Avenue, which opened in 1960 and housed a number of OCME functions. The facilities in this existing building are quite old with outdated HVAC, electrical, and fire suppression systems. As OCME has identified a pressing need to relocate the FPC to the development site due to the poor condition of the existing facilities and the development site's proximity to the laboratories and other OCME facilities located in the Hearst Building, which is right across the street. For easy access between the existing and proposed OCME facilities, a sky bridge is proposed over the de-mapped East 26th Street. Sky bridges connecting buildings within the Spark campus do not cross over map streets and are for staff circulation. Building B2 is proposed to contain about 552,000 zoning square feet, with about 200,000 square feet of community facility use, about 349,000 square feet of office or laboratory use, and about 3,000 square feet of retail use. The maximum building envelope for Building B2 is shown in this section in blue. It has a maximum envelope height of 420 feet. Building A, fronting on FDR Drive, is proposed to be the educational campus containing space for Hunter College Schools of Nursing, Health Professions, and Arts and Sciences, Borough of Manhattan Community Colleges, Allied Health Sciences, Health Studies, and Nursing Programs, the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, and a new public high school focused on science and health profession. The educational campus is proposed to contain about 561,000 zoning square feet, with most of that floor area dedicated to community facility use and a small portion to retail use. The maximum building envelope for Building A is shown on this section in light blue. It has a maximum envelope height of 370 feet. Oh, how do I go... Oh, thanks. Now, I'm going to talk briefly about circulation on the site. Building B1 will have its main entrance on First Avenue with the ground floor, including an entrance lobby for H&amp;H and retail space. Those accessing the site on car may be dropped off using the new access drive. Entrances for the different uses within Building B2 will face the open space, and the main entrances to Building A will also face the open space. The proposed project contains below-grade parking for 225 cars, which will be accessible through ramps on the de-mapped East 26th Street to keep local traffic within the development site and off East 25th Street. Loading berths are required by the zoning resolution and are proposed to be located along the de-mapped East 26th Street. To facilitate improved circulation, the applicant is introducing bidirectional traffic on East 26th Street. Spark Kips Bay includes a number of other public realm and circulation improvements, including the reconstruction of the pedestrian bridge over the FDR and widened sidewalks. The Spark development would also tie into the Kips Bay Coastal Resiliency Flood Protection Project through the construction of flood protection on East 25th Street. The open space and pedestrian improvements that are part of the proposed project are designed to link nearby open spaces, such as Bellevue Garden and Arthur Levy Playground. The proposed 0.6-acre open space is located along the southern exposure of the development site on East 25th Street to maximize direct sunlight. It would serve as the main connection and shared space for students, employees, patients, visitors, and the general public on this campus. It would facilitate easy navigation between the buildings and connect to the future ADA-accessible pedestrian bridge over the FDR. The space will be further activated through a one-story retail pavilion located next to the access drive. The space would be accessible and open to the public 24/7. The design of this open space is not yet finalized. The rendering on the right is illustrative. EDC is working with a design team selected through an RFP process to design the open space. The open space would remain in city ownership under DECAST jurisdiction and will be subject to review by the Public Design Commission. In addition, since the design of the open space is integral to proper circulation and function of the site, EDC and DCP will enter into Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, for the design and review process for DCP to have a review process concurrent with PDC's review. The chairperson, in their role as Director of this department, would provide final sign-off. I'll give a bit more information about the proposed changes to the pedestrian bridge over the FDR. EDC plans to demolish the existing pedestrian bridge, which is not ADA-accessible and also does not meet city or state standards for underbridge clearance heights. They plan to replace it with a new ADA-accessible bridge. However, the design for the replacement bridge is not yet finalized. These are two diagrams of the proposed development in the context of neighborhood scale. The diagram on the left shows the neighborhood scale along FDR Drive looking east towards the proposed development. You can see Building A in front of Building B2 and Building B1. The diagram on the right shows the neighborhood scale along First Avenue looking east at the development site with Building B1 in the front. The first diagram on this slide shows the neighborhood scale along East 26th Street facing south towards the development site, and the second diagram shows the neighborhood scale along East 25th Street facing north. The applicant is requesting... The applicants are requesting a number of actions to facilitate this development. I'll go into detail on each of these actions in the following slides. The first action is a zoning map amendment requested by EDC to change the rezoning area shown here in a block outline from an R8 district to a C64 district. C64 districts allow for 10 FAR of commercial or community facility use, while R8 districts allow for no commercial FAR and only 6.5 FAR of community facility use. The increased commercial and community facility use density would enable the proposed life sciences campus on the site. The rezoning area is bounded by the street centerlines of FDR Drive to the east, East 25th Street to the south, First Avenue to the west, and a line 255 feet north of East 25th Street to the north. The second requested action is a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to establish an MIH area with MIH Options 1 and 2 in an area coterminous with the rezoning area. While an MIH area is being mapped in connection with this rezoning, there's no proposed residential use as part of the proposed development. Next, EDC is requesting a special permit pursuant to ZR 74171 to allow for use Group 7 laboratory use not otherwise allowed by the underlying use regulations. Since the life sciences tenant has not yet been selected, EDC is requesting this use waiver to allow maximum flexibility in permitting all types of commercial lab uses. EDC is also requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution 74901. EDC is also requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution 74901 to allow modifications to zoning resolution section thirty-three, four-four-two, which is the section for alternate tower regulations that apply to C64 districts. They are seeking bulk waivers for Building B1 to increase the tower area beyond the alternate sky exposure plane in the area highlighted in purple along First Avenue and East Twenty-Fifth Street. They are also seeking bulk waivers to reduce the optional front open area in the area shaded in orange. Here's the section of B1 facing north. You can see the heightened setback waivers requested on First Avenue, highlighted again in purple and orange. Here you can see the extent of the heightened setback waivers requested on East Twenty-Fifth Street, highlighted in purple and orange. The next action is a disposition of city-owned property sought by EDC and DCAST. In this action, the western parcel highlighted in blue is proposed to be disposed of to a private developer who will be selected by EDC through a request for proposal process. A portion of the eastern parcel highlighted in purple will be disposed to CUNY. The open space will remain in city jurisdiction, but through this action, it may be disposed to the private developer of the western parcel for maintenance or otherwise for access easements as needed. The next action is site selection and acquisition of real property interest for the OCME facility in Building B2, and this action is being sought by EDC, DCAST, and OCME. After the construction of B2 by the selected developer, an approximately one hundred and twelve thousand square foot portion of the building may be reacquired by the city for the OCME forensic pathology center. The proposed OCME space meets the consideration of the applicable fair share criteria for compatibility, need for expansion in size of facility, necessary transit access, and distribution of similar facilities throughout the city. EDC and DCAST are also seeking an acquisition action for the H&amp;H outpatient care and training center in Building B1. After the construction of B1 by the private developer, a portion of the building may be reacquired by the city. Then it can be transferred to H&amp;H pursuant to section seventy-three, eighty-seven of the unconsolidated laws of the state of New York. Lastly, in a related application, EDC is seeking a city map change. While the design and, the design of the future pedestrian bridge is not yet finalized, EDC has signed a commitment letter with DOT to design and construct a replacement bridge. The applicant is aware that depending on the design of a future bridge, a follow-up mapping action may be necessary to map the new bridge. First, this action will demap the existing street lines, which are shown here in dash blue, and map new street lines along the sidewalks shown in purple. Second, this action will demap the elevations of the existing bridge to enable a bridge with higher clearance that matches city and state standards. This application requires a racial equity report, which helps put the proposal into context with neighborhood-level socioeconomic data. There's no housing proposed as part of this application. The displacement risk index estimates comparative levels of residential displacement risk for New York City's neighborhoods. The index ranks neighborhoods from lowest to highest risk based on recent population characteristics, housing conditions, and market pressures. On this index, Murray Hill, Kips Bay falls into the lowest category of displacement risk. The population of Murray Hill, Gramercy, and Stuyvesant Town is sixty-five percent white non-Hispanic, eighteen percent Asian, nine percent Hispanic or Latino, and four percent Black non-Hispanic. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw a nine percent increase in population with an increase in the Asian, Black, and Hispanic populations and a small decrease in the white population. While the population grew by nine percent from 2010 to 2020, the number of housing units in Murray Hill, Gramercy, and Stuyvesant Town increased by only four percent. Housing production in this area lies behind Manhattan overall and New York City overall, which showed an increase in housing units of eight, of seven and eight percent, respectively. The lead agency for seeker for this project is the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Housing, Economic Development, and Workforce, a notice of completion of a draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was issued on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. The DEIS identified significant adverse impacts with respect to historic and cultural resources, transportation, and construction. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be explored further in the FEIS. In summary, the applicants are seeking a number of actions to facilitate a new life sciences and education campus in the Kips Bay neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Six. The proposed building envelopes would vary with maximum heights between five hundred and three hundred and seventy feet and a floor area of one-point-eight million zoning square feet. The proposal also includes publicly accessible open space and the demolition and reconstruction of the existing pedestrian bridge over the FDR at East Twenty-Fifth Street. Thank you for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Ally, and that was extremely clear. And let me just, you know, say off the bat how exciting I think that this is. I am very familiar with the corridor here as somebody who represented the area in the city council once upon a time, and the idea of being able to integrate the medical uses with academic uses, with institutional of all types here, between NYU, Bellevue, VA, Alexandria Center, what's going to happen at Spark, plus what you're about to tell us about at 455 First Avenue, plus public health school, nursing school, high school focused on health. This is exactly where New York City should be leaning into advantages and really going even further. So I want to thank you, I want to thank EDC for doing a great job in pulling this together. And I have just a few questions before I go to my colleagues here. My first relates to the retail. You noted that it's anticipated to be in both B1 and B2, those two buildings.
There will also be a small amount of retail space in A.
In A as well, okay. So where, where in B1 and B2 would the retail sit? If you can show that to us again, that would be great. Would front on First, First Avenue, would front on Twenty-Sixth, Twenty-Fifth? Let's just take a look at where that is.
Um, the locations of the retail and some of the other spaces in this diagram are illustrative, and they're, they are still subject to change, but this is the plan that the applicant has provided as of now. So there is retail space in all of these buildings. A lot of the retail space is located around the open space, so that sort of complements the open space, people being able to walk in and out. Sorry, this diagram's a little bit blurry, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, this one looks like it's looking at loading berths. I don't know if this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, this is like also the ground floor plan. I don't have like a diagram that's only about where the retail is, but here you can kind of see the shapes of the buildings, where the entrances are, where you can see that in sort of the purplish color. And there will also be this small kiosk in the open space itself, which includes retail. Do you want to add?
Yeah, just on, for Building B1, there's retail space fronting on First Avenue. So that is, it's part of, you know, we encouraged the applicant, and EDC also wanted to activate First Avenue as much as possible, and then the other retail spaces are planned to be fronting on the open space to activate that further.
Okay, got it. So First Avenue plus the open space from within B2 and also Building A, correct? Okay. Great. Well, certainly an area that needs that level of activation. Obviously, this site has been very closed off and also not without a lot of integration to the rest of the neighborhood for a very long time. Okay, other questions from me on, and this is something we do not need to resolve today, but I just wanted to note or ask the question about the two-way traffic on Twenty-Sixth Street. Just as a point of history, the Twenty-Fifth Street used to be one-way and is now two ways. Twenty-Sixth Street is one-way now and is proposed to be two ways. DOT has presumably looked at these questions and believes that this is the, the right configuration for all traffic needs, both getting people in and out of the buildings, plus needs for the chief medical examiner, plus access to the FDR, to and from FDR and Point South on Twenty-Fifth Street. Is that, they have looked at this question already?
Yes, oh, yes. Um, yeah, so the applicant's been working with DOT as well because of the pedestrian bridge, so you know, everyone, so that has been looked at. The transportation impact was also identified in the DEIS, so it'd be further, further studied for mitigation. Pedestrian safety was also one of the biggest, you know, things that was identified in terms of importance to the community, especially with Arthur Levy Park right there and the uses being here, you know, the high school and things. So they're looking at other pedestrian safety improvements for the sidewalks and, you know, making it as safe as possible for pedestrians. The demapped Twenty-Eighth, Twenty-Sixth Street is demapped, so DOT doesn't have, you know, in terms of making that one-way or two-way, that'll be hopefully within the development site, but, you know, we'll be look, we'll be looking at sort of the traffic impacts overall for, for this development.
Who else uses Twenty-Sixth Street today, heading westbound? It is, it's an exit for, for ambulance use, correct?
Yeah, it's mostly used by the, the tenants of the development site, so Hirsch Building, the, the hospital there, like all of those uses.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll, we'll explore this with DOT when the, when the time comes, but it sounds like they have been very much in the mix here. Okay, on the bridge, the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the pedestrian bridge over the FDR Drive in contrast to the other bridges that you mentioned within the development site, this is a, this is a pretty core access point for residents of Waterside Plaza, although there is a way to access Waterside Plaza from Twenty-third Street and also from Thirty-Fourth Street. What would be the, what would be the, the alternatives here on an interim basis for Waterside Plaza residents? Presumably, they just would have to access from one of those other two routes for a period of time, is that correct?
I think that this, the plan for the deconstruction and reconstruction of the bridge, as well as the design of the bridge overall, is still being worked out, and EDC is working really closely with DOT to figure out the timing of that and how people would be able to still get from one side to the other even during the construction and demolition, but the details of that are not yet determined.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I, I will note that it's been a long requested improvement by the residents of Waterside Plaza, so that I'm sure will be welcome, although obviously it's a very important access point. And it also, if I understand, the, the land use actions in connection with making the build, the bridge ADA accessible, there is sufficient space on the west side of the FDR Drive to allow for more bridge area to be able to have a, a less dramatic incline and decline to be able to make it ADA compliant?
They're still working on the design because it's certainly a design challenge to figure out how to make this ADA accessible within the constraints of the site, and especially on the water side side as well, where there are ramps that lead down. And yeah, EDC is still working with DOT and will eventually work on a design for this, but there are a number of different options that they have thought of throughout the process, and they haven't landed on a specific one yet.
Okay, great. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I would like to thank, I know it sounds strange, Jennifer Reb, who fifteen years ago was the person who first thought about how to modernize the school of nursing and how to use it to achieve other city aims. So while she's gone from Hunter, I would like to acknowledge that she was the first person to really think of how to do this. That being said, I have a number of other questions. My first one is, part of this, how, can you provide for us a list of the different users and how much space they're using for what purpose? For instance, the community facility, I understand part of that is dorms?
Uh, no, there won't be dorms included in the proposed development. There are dorms on the site currently, but CUNY has a plan, or CUNY has announced that they have a plan to relocate all of those dorms to another location, so currently, sorry, let me just find my note on this. Currently, there are six hundred and forty-eight beds on the development site in the existing Brookdale campus, but by fall of 2025, all six hundred and forty-eight of those beds will be transferred to 569 Lexington Avenue, which already has CUNY dorms. It already has three hundred and eighty-four CUNY dorms, but these additional six hundred and forty-eight will be added on top of that, and all of those dorms will be transferred to this location. So there won't be any dorms at the proposed, at the development site after 2025.
And what was the address of the relocation site?
It's 569 Lexington.
And in terms of the space, the HHC's lease of additional space, HHC has a pretty big campus at Bellevue, and they have a number of uses that aren't really being utilized now. So which uses are relocating from HHC to this new proposed site?
Sorry, one second. Um, so the health and hospitals facility will be in the bottom portion of Building B1, and I've listed out some of the uses here, which are adult primary care, ambulatory care center, and nursing advanced practice center, and a simulation training center. So those are the uses that we understand to be moving to this new facility.
Okay, because right now, those uses are in main Bellevue, main Bellevue campus and are closer to public transportation for persons who want to use particularly the ambulatory care center and the adult primary care center. So I'm curious why Bellevue wants to move them and what the benefit is for patient care.
I'm not sure exactly, like, if all of these are being transferred in whole to the new site. I think this might be something for the applicant to address at the public hearing.
Okay, but that would need to be HHC, not DCAST, not, it would really need to be someone from Bellevue and HHC who could address the questions of what's happening on the Bellevue campus and what the master plan is for the Bellevue campus.
We can definitely relay your question and make sure that it can be answered.
And that someone's here?
Yeah.
Because I have more questions for them.
Okay. I will relay back questions to the applicant, and hopefully somebody from H&amp;H can be here or somebody can get the answers to those questions.
Okay, let's go for the first one.
Okay.
Um, and in terms of the mapping, the chair asked a number of questions, and I would just hope that we're going to see more advanced plans for both how, where the mapping is going to occur, the dimensions of the mapping, and whether there is going to be things like an elevator for persons. I mean, if we're going to do an ADA compliant, we might want to consider having elevators that would allow for easier access for mobility-challenged people. So I'd like to see, before it comes back and we're having the public hearing, a, a more fleshed-out plan for this mapping across the FDR.
So, oh, excuse me. So EDC is currently working on the design of the pedestrian bridge. It's not anticipated to be completed before we come back for a public hearing. However, they have indicated that there might be a follow-up mapping action related to the new bridge, in which case it will come back to the commission to present that. Again, because the design is not finalized yet, it's hard to say what that action would be eventually, but they're working on the design currently.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, but you can also understand that might be problematic as to what we're actually approving, which is kind of a, a theory of where a bridge might be, what it might look like, what the materials would be. I mean, we won't know any of those things then when we're asked to approve it.
Yeah, the design of the bridge won't yet be finalized. It's something that will be worked on during this time period. The de-mapping is allowing for.
I understand the de-mapping, but the mapping portion, which is also part of this.
The mapping portion, there's no, well, I guess we are mapping the street lines, but really the bridge is just being de- but really, the bridge is just being de-mapped, there's not an additional mapping action as part of this, there's only the de-mapping. The mapping would have to come later.
Okay, um, be
The, I can, sorry, that wasn't very clear how I explained it, but I can show on the diagram, so basically, where, um, it's a little bit confusing here, but you can see where the dashed blue lines are, and that's sort of mapping the existing bridge, cutting into the sidewalk, these notches on the side, which are the bases of the bridge. And so, we're de-mapping those notches and then mapping just right along the sidewalk, so it just, it becomes just a continuation of the sidewalk without the notches for the bridge. And then, the second part is de-mapping the existing elevations of the bridge, so they're just being de-mapped, there's no new elevations being mapped. Uh, if a mapping action is needed later to map new elevations for the new bridge, if that's needed later, it would be another separate ULEP application.
But since there's no elevation being mapped, it would have to come back, is that correct? They couldn't put a bridge across without another action?
It's something that is still being worked out with DOT, I don't know if, I don't know if Abraham, you want to speak to this further, um, but DOT is still working out how a new bridge might be mapped, and it might be a slightly different, um, strategy than how this old bridge was mapped, I don't know.
Hi, uh, Abraham Bray, Technical Review, um, so yeah, um, as was mentioned, you know, the bridge is still in the design process, and whether or not new things would need to be mapped or not depends on, um, what the final design looks like, if it's entire, ends up entirely being within the street line, then it's a street use in the streets, they wouldn't have to map anything new, but if the, the bridge ends up having to change street lines or something like that, that would be
But how could that be if we're widening the pedestrian walkway? It can't be within the lines of the existing.
There is no existing.
Well, there is a bridge there.
There's, well, the, the bridge itself is, like, the, the width of the bridge and all that, isn't, um, it's, it's drawn, it's called treatment lines, which are luscid it, but it's not a street line, um, sort of how like if DOT decides to widen a sidewalk within the right of way, they don't have to do a city map action for that, right? Um, so yeah, if, if the, the bridge ends up being designed where it pokes past the existing street lines, or it's like, get the ADA ramp up, or something like that, then that would need to be a new, um, uh, ULEP action that would come before the commission, but if they're able to design it in a way that stays completely within those street lines, then they wouldn't have to, so we're going to have to see what the final design looks like. But, um, anything that involves new changes to the city map would be a new ULEP application that would come for you guys.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, and correct me if my understanding is wrong, but what I hear you to say is that it is possible that DOT, et cetera, will design this so we never see it again. It is possible.
If it's within the street lines and that, and doesn't change the city maps, then there wouldn't be a city map, uh, ULEP action for it.
Okay, um, not, not okay that I think that's a really good thing, because I am concerned about the design of the bridge, but from what you're saying, this is my opportunity to either find out more about the design or not, unless they design it in such a way that it needs additional approvals. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for taking so long.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let me go to Commissioner Surlo.
Okay. Thank you, I, okay, um, I, I don't want to belabor this, but I'm going to build off of this for one second, um, I thought I had a simple question about the bridge, but it may have become more complicated. Just to see if I understand this correctly, the de-mapping action on the two sides of the FDR are areas that are currently mapped and related to the existence of the bridge, is that correct?
Yes.
So they facilitate the existence of the bridge today?
Yes.
And while we don't know, well, let me ask it differently, do we expect that the new bridge, regardless of whatever approvals may have to come back to us, or DOT can do internally, will be put in the same exact location as the current bridge?
It's possible that the bridge will be in the same location, it's also possible it'll be in a slightly different location, the location isn't yet
Understood, that was actually connected to the first question I had, when the chair asked about the impact that this may have on Waterside Plaza, that if it were going to be in a different location, they may be able to keep the existing bridge while they built the second bridge, and then, you know, open the second bridge and then demolish the first bridge, but my guess was that if it were going to be in the same place, that would have the impact that the chair potentially
If I could just jump in for one second?
Of course.
As a practical matter, it will be roughly in exactly the same space.
Roughly in the
Where, where, it really, the question here is, will it be a number of feet further this?
Over this way?
Wider here?
North or south?
And there, because it, there is no other place for this bridge.
Got it.
So it really is one location, the question is, does it go across the, 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 the lines of, of the mapping action, I think is really the question, but it is in the same, it's basically in the same place.
Fine, I, I wouldn't know that, there would no other options, but now that's, that's clear. So, so with that said, and assuming it's going to be in the same area, give or take a few feet, or whatever it's, was required, the de-mapping of this leaves the current bridge until the new bridge is built, with or without any further action, legal? Is it legal, non-conforming, I'm assuming those locations were facilitated, the existence of the bridge in some way? What is the status of the existing bridge with a de-mapping action without either, one, a new mapping action if necessary, or, two, the construction of a new bridge that doesn't need one?
Sure, this is my understanding, but Abraham, you can jump in also, um, while this is a ULEP application for the city map change, the actual map will need to be filed, the actual city map, new city map will need to be filed once this is all done, and that will be done closer in timing to when there will actually be the deconstruction of the bridge, so the timing will, will align such that I don't think we'll have this issue that you're speaking of, but Abraham, is that accurate, your understanding?
Oh, so there are things that will happen, even though the action is taking, our action and the council action is taking, being taken prior to the physical work and change, one is not really happening without the other thing happening, is that right?
Right, so basically, um, you know, assuming this, you know, goes through and gets, you know, approved by the commission, approved by the council, et cetera, that's giving permission to say, all right, you know, this change to the city map has been approved, we can do this. Um, but that change doesn't actually get taken into effect until we actually file the map with the borough president and some of various other agencies, and so that wouldn't happen until, like, was said, you know, much closer to construction that is actually happening, so in the interim, the street lines would stay as they are now, so there wouldn't be any kind of non-compliance issues or whatever.
Understood, it's very helpful, I appreciate that, so the, 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 let me ask you this, and then I, I won't, we'll move on. What is it that we may understand about DOT's new vision and how it looks at these projects that exists today, that may not require a mapping action, or if we weren't de-mapping this, perhaps changing anything at all, then how it worked when this was mapped and built? What, what has changed for DOT to say they're looking at whether or not a mapping action is necessary, or is it something that they can just authorize without a mapping action? That this wasn't able to benefit from the same point of view? Has something changed over time? Like, are there new rules, or laws, or policies that required a mapping action here for the bridge that no longer is, is required, or at least opens the door to a new look at how bridges like this were built, it, uh, at whatever point in time that bridge was built?
That is a good question, and honestly, I'm not entirely sure of the history behind that, when that might have changed, um, I'm going to start looking into it for you, but I'll, I, I
And I realize that's a really a DOT question, I'm just in the context of the discussion, and I don't mean to put the department on the hook for a DOT response, but it is a good, it's a question that obviously, when this comes back to us, would be helpful to know, and so I, I just appreciate that, and thank you, Mr., uh, Chair. One quick question, East Twenty-Sixth Street, it's de-mapped now? Who maintains East Twenty-Sixth Street today?
East Twenty-Sixth Street is part of the development site, so
Yes.
It is, uh, it's also under city ownership, as, as well as the development site is.
So it's a de-mapped street that the city manages and maintains?
Oh, well, it's
It's not a private, it's not somehow in a, in the
Oh, well, I'll confirm that, sorry, it's, um, meaning that, that it's part of the same, um, site, but I'll confirm who maintains the street.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the distinction between if it, if the city of New York is managing it, or are they managing it as somehow a, an owner of the larger campus? So that, again, something to follow up on. Lastly, can you just re- reiterate what you said about the dormitories at five sixty-nine Lexington?
Sure, um, there are already existing CUNY dormitories at five sixty-nine Lexington, um, but they are going to add additional dorms to five sixty-nine Lexington in order to move the dorms that are currently at the development site to five sixty-nine Lexington.
Okay, so that, thank you for that, I just wanted to make sure that's what I heard, five sixty-nine Lexington is a private, almost like a hotel, that is for dormitory use, can only be used by students, and it would just be interesting to know, it's not a, it's not the campus's building, and it's not the campus's dorms. Anyone can apply to live in the dorm, which we love, because I, I know the area, I know the neighborhood, I know the building, and we're thrilled to have people of all ages who are going to school live there, but the occupancy and vacancy is not something the school can determine or count on, so we should understand more about their plans and the number of rooms, maybe, and it's not clear to me if the school is, say, leasing those rooms on behalf of their students, in most cases, the students themselves are leasing the rooms, and they have to prove they're matriculated students, and this is when they're, they go to school, it's a wonderful program, um, but just, I just wanted to be clear on that, because it's actually not a dormitory for the school itself, unless they've entered into an agreement that I wouldn't know about, but if you go to their website, there's solicitation for anyone to be able to apply to that camp, to that building, which is, again, a great addition to Midtown East, but it would be interesting to learn more about their plans with expanding, as, as it's been reported, the use of that building for campus dormitory use.
Sure, I, I will, um, get confirmation on that question.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Commissioner, let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, a, uh, substantial portion of, uh, the proposed building A, uh, contains , uh, space for a New York City public school, uh, I'm presuming a healthcare-focused high school of, of some kind?
Um, yes, it's, it's meant to be a high school focused on science and health professions, with sort of career-oriented opportunities for the students.
Is this a, a hard commitment by SCA, is it in their capital budget? Do you know?
Um, I'm not sure, but, yes, okay, yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Reprochett.
Yes, uh, sorry, one more last question on this pedestrian bridge, I understand the design is up in the air, they're probably going to go back and forth, who's responsible for getting this thing built, at the end of the day? Who is, which is the agency, or?
It will be EDC, uh, and they will be consulting with DOT, and they have an, uh, working, uh, they're working on an agreement for how they're going to work together on this, but EDC will be building the bridge.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair, thanks for the presentation, I have a couple quick comments, the first one, uh, has to do with the bridge really quickly, in, in looking at the DEIS, I noticed that, you know, your response to Policy Nine, in terms of the visual impacts, uh, and the connection, the visual connection to the waterfront is very slim, and it sort of makes sense, because, you know, without action, you wouldn't even physically get to the waterfront, clearly, there are i- important contributions to that, but given the fact that the bridge hasn't been designed and so forth, it would be useful to expand a little bit in terms of, how do you think that there isn't, or that the project is consistent with the WRP requirements in terms of protecting the scenic quality of the waterfront there? Again, I don't think it's a big problem, but because the, there are aspects that haven't been designed, I think you might, you want to be a little more detailed in that regard. In terms of the, um, in terms of the, I, I mean, clearly, the chair, eh, opened like that, and it's, that's, it's really interesting, it's exciting, I appreciate your reference to the one ninety-seven A plan in that regard, but I'm wondering if at some point, certainly when we see it again, you can provide a little more detail in terms of how has the community, the ne- the neighbors been engaged throughout these years in the process of arriving to this vision? Um, this is more just a comment, the, the other thing is, so I appreciate the, the system of interventions associated with adapting to climate change here, the analysis has almost exclusively focused on the preliminary one ninety-seven, sorry, with the preliminary one hundred-year floodplain, eh, and the five hundred-year floodplain, you and the DEIS are assuming an eighty-year life, lifespan, is that correct?
Um, I would, I would need to check back on this, we weren't the lead agency on the environmental review for this one, it was MLEC, but I can check back on that information.
Thank you, it, just because it would be worth, again, because this is under WRP's scrutiny, it, it will be important to incorporate, eh, the projections beyond the preliminary eh, one hundred-year floodplain, because it will be significantly impacted by it, I mean, not, not that it isn't already, as has been noted, in that regard, it would be, eh, even though it's exciting to see so many different interventions, including the flood wall and the deployable flood wall, eh, we don't have any details on that, and I would be interested in understanding, how does that engage with the bridge and the pedestrian access to the waterfront, which is sort of like the, the other point that we were discussing, so if you can provide additional details before the hearing, that would be great.
I'll try to get more information about this, the, uh, additional flood resiliency infrastructure, while it is part of the Spark Plan overall, is not related to any of the zoning actions, so it's, it's not tied into any of these actions that I did present today, but I will try and get more information about those.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Gold.
Hi, um, thank you, and, excuse me, I would echo the earlier comments, that was a super clear presentation, um, I just wanted to follow up on one, uh, point, um, that was in there, on, uh, MIH, um, so just, uh, to understand a little bit better where that comes in, if we're not specing in any housing.
Sure, because, um, this project does include a rezoning, even though it doesn't include any residential floor area, in, includes a significant increase in residential, um, floor area capacity, just by changing the zoning district from an R-eight district to a C-six-four district, and because of that, based on, uh, DCP's policies, it automatically requires that we map an MIH area, uh, in perpetuity in this location, so they are required to map MIH even though there's no residential proposed as part of this project.
So with that being, um, I guess with that, that would be a down-the-road, if for some reason, either it doesn't happen, or it does happen, and at some point, I don't know, number of years into the future, it, the, the use has changed, is that, the
Yeah, if like, in the hypothetical Yeah, if, like, in the hypothetical, a number of years down the road, the use changes to residential, it would be subject to M I H requirements.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, thank you, Ally. This item is now certified, and we will move on to the next item of the day, and I believe that you're going to hang out and stay with us. So Sarah, what's next?
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and a special permit in Manhattan Community District Six. Our presenter is Ally.
Welcome back, Ally.
Thank you. All right. Hello, everyone. Once again, this project is 455 First Avenue. It is an application by 455 First Avenue Associates and the New York City Economic Development Corporation, or E D C, to facilitate a new commercial life sciences development at 455 First Avenue in the Kipps Bay neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Six. The applicants are requesting several actions, including a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment to map M I H, and a zoning resolution, 74901 special permit for bulk modifications. Because we just discussed the project context for Spark, which is right across the street, I'm going to breeze through the project context slides a little bit, but here, again, you can see the development site highlighted in purple at 455 First Avenue, and then right across the street, in blue, you can see where the Spark site is, which we just talked about. This slide shows the area map with north at the top. The proposed development site outlined here in purple is currently zoned R8 with a C25 overlay on First Avenue. Most of the surrounding area, which is defined as the area within 600 feet of the site, is also located in an R8 district. C25 overlays are mapped along First Avenue on the western side. C18, C18A, and C19 districts are mapped along Second Avenue west of the development site. The area west of the development site is primarily characterized by residential and mixed-use buildings, while the area east of the site is characterized mainly by institutional uses, mostly life sciences uses, as I spoke about in the previous presentation. The development site is located on Block 932, Lot 17, bounded by Mount Carmel Place to the west, the pedestrian way on former 27th Street to the north, First Avenue to the east, and East Twenty-Sixth Street to the south. The site has an area of about 44,000 square feet and currently houses the Department of Mental Health and Hygiene's Public Health Laboratory. The lab was constructed in the 1960s and is 14 stories tall and also 191 feet. In 2018, the Department of Health and Mental, oh, sorry, the Department of Mental Health and Hygiene announced that it would relocate the Public Health Laboratory to a new purpose-built facility at a site adjacent to Harlem Hospital. Here on the right, you can see the development site facing west from First Avenue and East 27th Street. On the left, you can see the view, the view down First Avenue facing southwest. The photos on this, sorry, the photos on this slide show the condition of East 27th Street, which is a pedestrian way north of the development site. The first photo shows the view of the pedestrian way facing northwest, and the second photo shows the view facing southeast. Here in the photo on the left, you can see the view of Mount Carmel Place facing southwest from the intersection with East 27th Street, with the development site on the left. In the second photo, you can see the view looking away from the development site at the intersection of Mount Carmel Place and the East 27th Street pedestrian way towards Bellevue South Park. In the first photo on this slide, you can see the development site from Mount Carmel Place. The second shows the view of Mount Carmel Place facing northeast from East 26th These photos show the development site from East 26th Street. Oh, and so the first photo shows the view facing southeast on East 26th Street, and the photo on the right shows the view of the development site looking northwest from East 26th Street. The proposed development is a new life sciences building. It's the result of a 2018 request for Expressions of Interest, or R F E I, from E D C, to create an applied life sciences hub with space for a large research and development organization, wet labs, and other space for commercial life sciences R and D tenants, and a design that fosters collaboration within the building and the New York City's, and New York City's broader life sciences ecosystem. In 2022, the mayor announced that the city would partner with Taconic Partners and Divco West, which together formed the applicant, 455 First Avenue Associates LLC, to redevelop the project with the NYU Grossman School of Medicine as the anchor tenant. The project is now being realized in the proposed 13-story commercial life sciences building with a base height of 255 feet and a maximum total height of 270 feet. The proposed development would have a floor area ratio of 10 and contain about 444,000 zoning square feet. It would be comprised primarily of laboratory space with retail and multipurpose space on the ground floor. The building is specifically designed to accommodate life sciences businesses at all stages of growth. It would provide incubation space for startups, graduation space for life sciences buildings, space for established research and development firms, and anchor space for the NYU Grossman School of Medicine. The image on the right is for illustrative purposes only. The following set of diagrams is meant to show the proposed development in the context of neighborhood scale. This diagram shows the neighborhood scale along First Avenue facing, sorry, this shows the neighborhood scale along First Avenue facing west towards the development site, and this diagram shows the neighborhood scale along East 26th Street facing north towards the development site. This diagram shows the neighborhood character along Mount Carmel Place facing east towards the development site, and this last one shows the scale along East 27th Street facing south towards the development site. The applicants are requesting three actions to facilitate this development. I'll go into detail on each of these actions on the following slides. The first action is a zoning map amendment to change the rezoning area, which is highlighted here in pink, from an R8 district and an R8 district with a C25 commercial overlay to a C64 district. R8 districts allow for no commercial F A R and only 6.5 F A R of community facility use. With the commercial overlay, two F A R of commercial is permitted. C64 districts allow for 10 F A R of commercial or community facility use. The second requested action is a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to establish an M I H area with M I H options one and two in an area co-terminus with the rezoning The last requested action is a special permit pursuant to Z R 74901, so allow modifications to Z R Section 33432 for bulk waivers for laboratory uses. This waiver is sought to increase the tower area beyond the heightened setback regulations applicable to C64 districts in the area shaded in purple on this plan. The requested bulk waivers would accommodate large regularly shaped floor plates suitable for lab use. Large floor plates offer sufficient space for collaboration among lab users and subdivision for smaller startup companies. Lab spaces also require larger, or taller, floor-to-floor heights to accommodate large machines and additional mechanicals. The 40,000-square-foot floor plates in the proposed development, which would provide an approximately 55-foot distance from core to perimeter on the north-south axis, are in line with the best practices in laboratory planning. Here you can see the bulk waivers requested along, along Mount Carmel Place and First Avenue. And here you can see the bulk waivers requested on East 26th Street and the East 27th Street pedestrian way. Similar to the Spark application, this application requires a racial equity report, which puts the project in context with neighborhood-level socioeconomic data. Again, there's no housing proposed as part of this application either. Because the project is right across the street from Spark, all of the R E R information is the same. Again, the displacement risk index measures comparative levels of residential displacement, and the index ranks Murray Hill, Kipps Bay in the lowest category of displacement risk. The population of Murray Hill, Gramercy, and Stuyvesant Town is 65% white, non-Hispanic, 18% Asian, 9% Hispanic or Latino, and 4% Black, non-Hispanic. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw a 9% increase in population, with an increase in the Asian, Black, and Hispanic populations, and a small decrease in the white population. While the population grew by 9% from 2010 to 2020, the number of housing units in Murray Hill, Gramercy, and Stuyvesant Town increased only 4%. Housing production in this region lagged behind Manhattan overall and New York City overall, which showed an increase in housing units of 7% and 8% respectively. In summary, the applicants are seeking a number of actions to facilitate a new commercial life sciences building in the Kipps Bay neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Six. The proposed building would have a maximum height of 270 feet and a floor area of about 444,000 zoning square feet. Thank you so much for listening, and I am happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Ally. Just one from me. So this is an application from the city?
It's, it's E D C in partnership with 455 First Avenue Associates LLC, which is the combination of Taconic Partners and Divco West, which the city has partnered with to develop this site.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, is there no disposition action needed here, and if not, why not?
There's an existing disposition on the site that I would need to check back on the exact year of that disposition, but when we looked into it, we found that that disposition is still in effect and covers the uses that would be in the proposed development, so they didn't need to request another disposition.
So it's previously done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin?
One quick question from me. You noted that several of the things that are currently on-site will be relocated to Harlem Hospital?
Yes. It will be relocated, located to a new purpose-built facility near Harlem Hospital. So it won't be at Harlem Hospital, it will be right next door.
Can we find out more about exactly where it's going to be, what it's going to be, and whether it's funded by anybody?
Sure, I'll find out more information about that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Ally. This one's certified.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of your good work here. Okay, let's move on, Sarah.
The third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and a special permit in Brooklyn Community District Seven. Our presenter is Jukey Tsai.
Chair, I'm recusing this matter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Repershut is recused. Welcome, Jukey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Aerolinen Supply Company for a zoning map amendment from R5, from an R5B district to an R71 district, a zoning text amendment to create an M I H area, and a zoning special permit to waive mandatory parking minimums, all in order to facilitate two new 13-story developments totaling approximately 248,000 square feet with approximately 244 dwelling units, including 61 M I H units in Windsor Terrace, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. The project area is located in Windsor Terrace. The surrounding area contains a mix of residential, commercial, and community facility uses, characterized by mixed-use and commercial buildings along Prospect Park West and Eighth Avenue, with residential use concentrated in the mid-blocks. Prospect Park West, just east of the project area, is a local commercial corridor with a range of retail and service uses. Local community facility uses include houses of worship and schools, including P S 10 Elementary School on Seventh Avenue. Bishop Boardman Apartments, a seven-story senior housing development operated by Catholic Charities, is located one block to the north. The Park Slope Armory, Y M C A, is located three blocks northwest. The 526-acre Prospect Park is located two blocks to the north, you can see that in the upper right-hand corner on this slide, and Greenwood Cemetery is located four blocks to the south, just off the screen in this slide. The surrounding area is well-served by public transit. The 15th Street Station, serving the F and G lines, is less than a quarter mile from the project area. Additionally, the B61, B67, and B69 bus lines all serve the area. The built context in the surrounding area consists of one- and two-family and multifamily residences and mixed-use and commercial buildings. Residential buildings range from one to seven stories in height, and mixed-use and commercial buildings range from one to four stories. The surrounding area is mapped with R5B, R6B, and R8B zoning districts, including C24 commercial overlays mapped in conjunction with R5B and R8B districts. The project area and a large portion of the surrounding area were mapped with R5B districts as part of the 2005 South Park Slope rezoning. R5B is a contextual district that allows for residential development with a maximum F A R of 1.35 and with a maximum building height of 33 feet. An R8B zoning district is mapped generally along portions of Prospect Park West at Bartell-Pritchard Square, and you can see on the upper right-hand corner. R8B is a contextual district that allows for residential development with a maximum F A R of 4.0 and a maximum building height of 75 feet. Additionally, two blocks north of the project area is the southern boundary of the Park Slope Historic District designated by L P C in 1973. The project area consists of a mid-block portion of Block 1113. It totals 13 full tax blocks. Among the 11 non-applicant-owned tax lots, there are 10 three-story, three-unit residential buildings, and a four-story, 16-unit residential building. The development site consists of two interior lots, Lot 61 and Lot 73, which have a combined total lot area of 54,085 square feet. Lot 61 is in a regular, flag-shaped lot with 132 feet of frontage on Prospect Avenue and a portion that does not have any street frontage. Lot 73 is a rectangular lot with 150 feet of frontage on Prospect Avenue. The development site is improved with a one- and two-story laundry facility and unenclosed accessory parking. The site has been occupied with a laundry business for approximately 100 years, and since 1978, by the applicant Aerolinen, which supplies textiles to a wide range of local businesses, like restaurants and doctors' offices within New York and also in New Jersey. This site has received variances from the B S A necessary to allow Aerolinen to operate as a Use Group 16 laundry at the R5B-zoned development site, where semi-industrial use would otherwise be prohibited. The current variance is set to expire in 2029. Moving into some site photos, this site looks west on Prospect Avenue, and I'm going to go down the block. You can follow along on the locator map. Moving west, this also looks west on Prospect Avenue, and you can see the development site on the right-hand side with a little bit of that pink hashed line. This photo looks north at the development site. You can see some of that unenclosed loading area and potentially accessory parking. Moving down the block, this looks west on Prospect Avenue. This photo looks northwest on Prospect Avenue, and you can again see some of the frontage of the development site, that's a different portion of it, that larger 150-foot frontage with the pink hash. Turning around, this photo looks east on Prospect Avenue, and again, you can see the development site on the left-hand side. This photo looks east again on Prospect Avenue. And finally, this photo looks east at the intersection of Prospect Avenue and Eighth The applicant proposes two new 13-story residential buildings with a total of approximately 248,000 square feet of residential floor area, with a total of 244 dwelling units, with 61 of those permanently income-restricted pursuant to M I H Option 1. The pink hash lines here on this slide are added to differentiate the proposed project from the existing built The proposed development would be designed with four and seven-story base heights, followed by a 10-foot setback before rising to a building- by a 10-foot setback before rising to a building height of 130 feet or 13 stories. The proposed development would also provide approximately 21,000 square feet of landscaped open space at the rear of the site. No accessory off-street parking would be provided pursuant to the proposed special permit to waive the residential parking requirement. And this is an aerial here. The applicant is proposing three actions to facilitate this project. The first is a zoning map amendment from R5B to R71, which would be mapped on a mid-block portion of Block 1113. Well, I'm supposed to have a slide on the R71 district, I'm just going to talk right through it. R71 is a non-contextual district, which would allow for residential use up to a maximum permitted FAR of 4.6 in MIH areas. In MIH areas, R71 permits a maximum base height of 75 feet and a maximum building height of 135 feet or 13 stories. Without a special permit to waive it, off-street accessory parking for residential uses is required for 50% of non-income-restricted units. Now, if City of Yes for Housing Opportunity Tax Amendment, currently in public review, is adopted as currently proposed, the new max height permitted in R71 districts is typically 115 feet. However, for development sites over 40,000 square feet that are eligible sites under the proposed ZR 23-435, CHO would permit the maximum height for an R71 district under these conditions to be 193 feet or roughly 19 stories. Under CHO, parking would no longer be required, and the requested zoning special permit pursuant to ZR 74-533 would no longer be necessary. It's worth noting that in light of the proposed changes under City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, the applicant's proposals for 13-story buildings has not changed. The second action the applicant is proposing is a zoning tax amendment to designate a mandatory inclusionary housing area contiguous with the rezoning area. MIH Option 1 is proposed to be mapped, which requires 25% of the residential floor area be provided as housing affordable to households at an average of 60% of the area median income. Third, the applicant requests a special permit pursuant to ZR 74-533 to waive the 92 off-street accessory residential parking spaces required under the current regulations. While both Options 1 and 2 would be mapped, the applicant is currently planning to select MIH Option 1, resulting in 61 income-restricted housing units for low-to-moderate income households with an average income of 60% of AMI. This application requires a racial equity report, which helps put the MIH proposal into context with neighborhood-level socioeconomic data. According to the racial equity report, the AMI in Community District Seven is about $67,000, which is roughly 88% of citywide AMI and roughly 48% of the New York City region AMI. The proposed development would include 244 dwelling units, with 61 of those being income-restricted. The applicant states that under MIH Option 1, they provide a total of 25 dwelling units at 31% to 50% AMI, 25 dwelling units at 51% to 80% AMI, and 15 dwelling units at 80% to 100% AMI. The population living in Sunset Park Windsor Terrace is 36% Asian, non-Hispanic, 3% Black, non-Hispanic, 37% Hispanic-Latino, and 21% White, non-Hispanic. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw a 5% increase in population with an increase in the Asian, Black, and White populations and a decrease in the Hispanic and Latino population. While the population grew by 9%, the number of housing units grew by just 4% in Sunset Park and 5% in Windsor Terrace. While there are other areas in Community District Seven with higher displacement risk, the Windsor Terrace South Park Slope Neighborhood Tabulation Area, where the project is located, and I've noted that here, has the lowest displacement risk as determined by the department's EDDE tool. The medium household income in Windsor Terrace South Slope Neighborhood, excuse me, the Windsor Terrace South Park Slope Neighborhood Tabulation Area is roughly $134,000, and the population is 69% White, non-Hispanic, 13% Hispanic-Latino, 9% Asian, non-Hispanic, and 3% Black, non-Hispanic. In summary, this is a private application by Arrow Linen Supply Company for a zoning map amendment from R5B to R71, a zoning tax amendment to map MIH, and a zoning special permit to waive mandatory parking minimums, all in order to facilitate two new 13-story developments totaling approximately 248,000 square feet of residential floor area with 244 dwelling units, including 61 MIH units in Windsor Terrace, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Jukey. I'm going to start with Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Can you walk me through the rationale of an R71 versus an R7A? An R7A would provide us with the same housing at 4.6 FAR, and I find the R71 height to be way out of context for that area. So why would the developer choose that over an R7A, which provides the same housing, wouldn't take away any square footage?
Thanks, Commissioner Dweck. That's a great question. I'm going to let the applicant, when they come back, speak on the rationale for that specific district. A couple of things I just want to highlight here. You know, I know there are changes under City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, and again, I really would like to let the applicant speak to that. The thing I do want to highlight here is just the sort of irregularity of the lot that this is being proposed on. That flag-shaped section of the lot provides a lot of floor area to build, but you really can't build in that rear section between the existing other developments. So I just want to highlight that, but again, let the applicant speak to the rationale behind this district.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up, have there been any issues with a shadow study on the park, on the height?
So as part of the process for various applications going through ULP, while City of Yes for Housing Opportunity has been referred, there is a tech memo alongside the EAS that has done some rudimentary shadow analysis on the, basically a with-action scenario that would include a 200-foot building. So that's available in the EAS, and there has been analysis on it. From my cursory glance at it, don't see it touching the park, or else I think it would have triggered like more strenuous analysis, but that analysis is available at the end of the EAS in the tech memo.
And one last question, has there been a Phase One or a environmental studies for the operation of a laundry at the premises?
Sorry, I'm...
So generally, and I'm not saying this is the case in the site, places that have been historically used as laundromats or laundries or cleaners, dry cleaners, there is some kind of environmental remediation required?
Yeah.
And my question is, have they done a study and analysis of the site?
That is a great question. I'm going to need to go dig back into the EAS on that. I know it flags because of the previous industrial use in the screenings, but that exact question, I'm going to need to get back to you on.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, Jukey, thank you very much. My question is about Arrow. One, where are they relocated? How many employees do they have, first of all?
So I can just tell you what I know.
Okay.
Which is that in the EAS, and what's been detailed is that, from what I've read and what I understand, the plan is to relocate this facility to somewhere else in Brooklyn that is zoned for like appropriately industrial use.
I get that. My concern is, though, that finding that appropriate use, when will that happen and will it happen? There's no requirement that they find another location. They could find a location in Long Island. So I'd like to know if they have current plans about where they're going to relocate and how many of the employees will be able to relocate there before we vote on whether we should allow the zoning change.
Understood. Thanks, Commissioner. And given that Arrow Linen is part of this applicant team, I think they'll be able to speak very clearly to what's going on with the facility.
Okay. And then I would also like to be associated with the questions from Commissioner Dweck on the why R71.
Understood.
That's it.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Sario?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions on my end. One was, in addition to the laundry, there isn't any other industrial tenant, right? That's the only one? Cool. And are there any plans to relocate that tenant so far?
So again, from what I understand, the applicant is Arrow Linen Supply Company, so the owner of the current facility is the applicant in this case. And again, what has been written, what I understand from the EAS, is that there are plans to relocate within Brooklyn. However, beyond that, I want to let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, thank you. I had a similar question regarding the potential ground contamination based on the history of the lot. What I remember reading in the EAS was that there was, the applicant is required to follow basically the regulations during excavation and moving all of that, but it would be interesting to know if, like what is the actual plan to do that? Especially, well, thinking, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be the maximum, given that there's proposed housing uses here, but it would be interesting to understand what are the implications for the open space that is proposed in the back? In terms of sustainability measures, I didn't see much in terms of whether there were any renewables or any additional, you know, features that we could discuss, but I'm wondering if you can speak to that at this point or whether we should ask the applicant to share more?
So I don't have further details on specific building sustainability measures. You know, I think it's always worth pointing out that building, like apartment buildings within a five-minute walk from the train is probably one of the best possible things we can do for the environmental standpoint from a land use policy perspective. But I just want to highlight that, but as far as specific building things, specific building matters, I'll ask the applicant to be able to speak to that at their public hearing.
Thank you. And so just in building on the question about the height of the building, I also just wanted to ask, you know, whether, you know, why is there such a different treatment or at least, you know, schematic thinking at this point in terms of the western facade, which breaks down that sort of like big glass facade with the balconies to what you see on the eastern side, you know? Which in my mind, you know, is actually helping to...
Sorry, I want to scroll the slide.
Fair enough.
Which one did you want to look at?
The opposite to that one.
Oh, okay.
But you're to the point, if you go back one. One more? Thank you. That to me is one of the places where, you know, it does look very big. The western facade sort of like breaks that sort of like big plane with small balconies as they do right now toward the avenue or in the corners. So it would be interesting to understand, you know, what's the thinking behind the facade treatment and the difference between the two sides of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I'll flag that for the applicant to speak to.
I mean, to credit the applicant, even though I concur with the question about the height of the building, I feel that the way in which the massing has been distributed makes sense given the irregularity of the lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Muddin?
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to follow up on the Brownfield issue. So to answer Commissioner Dweck's question a little bit more directly is that, yes, this is a site that has been deemed contaminated based on prior historic use. My question is, has the developer conducted their soil boring tests and water tests on the site to determine exactly what those contaminants are?
I'm going to need to follow up with the applicant team on that one.
I kind of figured that much, Jukey. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Going back to Commissioner Dweck.
Last follow-up. Has any study been done on the potential for displacement on the non-applicant-owned sites?
Yeah, so it's a great question and something that's been flagged. In the EAS, none of the sites, the 11 non-applicant-owned sites, were flagged as soft sites for development. The in-between sites, you can kind of see here, the ones between the buildings that are like three stories, walk-up buildings, a lot of those didn't fly because they're separately owned, so the idea that a developer might buy up multiple of those buildings and build, again, they're separately owned and so did not flag as soft sites. In that building, the 16-unit building, there are a few rent-stabilized units, and this is something that's, I think people are quite aware of this, but in part because, again, did not flag as a soft site, but also there are, you know, great rules from the 2019 HSTPA, HSTPA, am I saying that right, Commissioner Goodrich? That prevent landlords from just evicting people to demo and rebuild.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, great. Thank you, Jukey. This item is now certified, and we'll look forward to picking it up in the process. Thank you. Okay, Sarah, back to you.
The fourth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in the Bronx Community District One.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Afternoon.
This is a review session for certification of the 438 Concord Avenue rezoning application. Next slide. BronxCo LLC is requesting a zoning map amendment and a tax amendment to do a rezoning, create a new mandatory inclusionary housing area, and include zoning District R7D in the special mixed-use District 18. These amendments aim to facilitate the development of one new 10-story building with approximately 87 housing units, of which 24 are intended to be income-restricted. The building will also have light industrial and retail spaces and is located on 438 Concord Avenue in the Mott Haven neighborhood, Community District One at the Bronx. Next slide. The surrounding area is bounded by 147th Street to the north, 1000 Boulevard to the east, St. Mary's Street to the south, and Jackson Avenue to the west, and it is entirely within Community District One of the Bronx. Within the surrounding area, there are two recently completed developments. The first one on 501 1000 Boulevard is 14 stories, and the second one on 880 East 147th Street is 11 stories. Across the street of the development site on 431 Concord Avenue, a rezoning application effective on 2021 rezoned portions of three lots from an M12 zoning district to an R7D zoning district to facilitate the development of an 11-story residential building with approximately 88 dwelling units. The construction of this development has not yet begun. To the west of the project area is St. Mary's Park, the largest park in the South Bronx at 35.3 acres, including playgrounds, sport fields, and an indoor pool and a recreational center. Several schools are located in the surrounding area, including the Neighborhood Charter School located at 411 Wells Avenue, the American Dream High School located at 403 Concord Avenue, and House of Bigman located at 390 Jackson Avenue. Next slide. The surrounding area is well-served by public transit, and it is within the transit zone. The East 143rd Street subway station, serving the 6th train, is located approximately 700 feet southeast of the proposed project area. The buses BX17 and BX19 run along East 149th Street, two blocks north of the proposed project area. Next slide. The proposed project area was initially mapped with an M11 zoning district in 1961 and was rezoned to the current M12 zoning district in 1964. The existing land uses within the surrounding area consist of one, two, and multifamily residences, mixed-use commercial and residential buildings, industrial buildings, and community facilities, including a few schools. The existing zoning districts ma- The existing zoning districts mapped within the surrounding area include M12, M13, R6, R 71, and R 7D. Next slide. The project area is currently zoned as M12. It consists of lots 6, 7, 8, 9, 14, and 20 of block 2577. Only lots 7, 8, 9, and 14 will be developed, the development site, sorry, comprising a total area of 141,000 square feet. Next slide. Lot 6 is a 2,500-square-foot lot improved with a two-story, two-family dwelling built in 1901. It is partially part of the project area, and it is not controlled by the applicant. Next slide. Lot 7 is controlled by the applicant, and it is a 2,500-square-foot lot improved with a two-story, two-family dwelling unit in 1901, built in 1901, and is to remain. This site is transferring development rights to lots 9 and 14. Next slide. Lot 8 is controlled by the applicant, and it is a 2,500-square-foot lot improved with a two-story, two-family dwelling built in 1901, to remain. This site is also transferring development rights to lots 9 and 14. Next slide. Now, this is Lot 9, 438 Concord Avenue. It is controlled by the applicant, and it is a 7,700-square-foot vacant lot used for private parking. This is one of the two sites where the proposed building would be. Next slide. And this is Lot 14, 435 Wells Avenue. It is controlled by the applicant, and it is a 12,000-square-foot lot improved with a one-story auto repair shop built in 1931. This is the second site where the proposed building would be. Next slide. And lastly, this is Lot 20, is a 5,000-square-foot lot improved with an approximately 1,000-square-foot two-story, two-family dwelling built in 1901, and is not controlled by the applicant. Next slide. The proposed M14 with R 7D zoning district is consistent with the bulk, density, and uses within the surrounding area. It is a district that is usually mapped in medium-density areas of the city, and has a maximum residential FAR of 5.6, a maximum base height of 95 feet, and a maximum total building height of 115 feet. When residential buildings are developed in an R 7 district, they result in apartment buildings similar to those found close to the proposed development. Next slide. Now, the proposed development consists of one new 10-story mixed-use building with approximately 170,000 square feet of total floor area. It includes 87 dwelling units, intends to dedicate approximately 25,000 square feet of office space, 7,000 square feet of light industrial space, 6,000 square feet of community facility, 3,000 square feet of commercial space, and 43 vehicle parking spaces with 52 bike parking spaces. Next slide. The light industrial uses would be located mainly in the basement and first floors. Commercial retail would be located mainly on the ground floor. The community facility spaces are equally distributed between the ground floor and the second floor. The commercial offices are located mainly at the third floor, and from the fourth to the 10 floors would be dedicated to the residential portion and the recreational rooftop. The proposed development will have a base height of nine stories, that's around 92 feet, will set back 15 feet at the 10 floors on both sides facing the streets, and will rise to a total height of 111 feet. Next slide. In order to facilitate these developments, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezon from the existing M12 light industrial zoning district to an M14 with R 7D medium-density zoning. Next slide. Contaminating to the project area, the applicant is proposing to modify Appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish an MIH area over a portion of block 2577. They also propose to modify Section 123-63 to include zoning District R 7D to the special mixed-use district number 18. Next slide. Moving on to demographic conditions, in the Hunts Point's Longwood and Melrose neighborhoods, 68% of the residents identify as Hispanic or Latino of any race, and 27% identify as Black, non-Hispanic. This is similar to the Bronx as a whole, but much higher than in the city overall. Next slide. The neighborhood had an increase in the total population by 2% between 2010 and 2020, compared to the 6% growth in the borough and 8% growth in the city overall. Next slide. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, the applicant is required to complete a racial equity report on housing and opportunity, because the proposed actions would change the use regulations or permitted floor area in a manufacturing district where a building in the project is at least 100,000 square feet of floor area. In the report, the applicant states that the proposed project could add 24 of its 87 dwelling units as income-restricted in the Bronx Community District 1, a district that has experienced multiple housing production in recent years, and is a location accessible to jobs, amenities, and services. Next slide. That concludes my presentation, thank you very much for your attention, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to start with Commissioner Murrin. Thank you Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. One is, what are the two homes, what development rights are the two homes transferring over? The existing development rights that are on the site, or the development rights once the site is upzoned?
The intention is to transfer the FAR so they can build more in the sites 9 and 14.
Correct, but is it what's there now, or is it what's proposed to be zoned? Because they're going to be upzoned, so there'll be more bulk to transfer once that zoning takes place, so that's what I'd like to find out.
I can do more research on that, and I will get back to you.
And then the second is just merely a comment, because I know that, you know, we've had one rezoning which, to date, hasn't yielded anything on Concord Avenue, and this is going to be the second, and this neighborhood is sort of a hodgepodge of all sorts of everything. Where does the department stand on looking at this as a comprehensive sort of rezoning to try and get this in a more thoughtful mold for this community? Because, you know, the jail is right across the street, there's been a lot of effort and concentration on what the built environment looks like, so I'd like to try to understand this a little bit better, where we're going with it.
Commissioner, are you asking whether this could be part of a broader neighborhood plan at some point?
That is correct.
I mean, the short answer is, we are in the process of thinking about what might be future areas for neighborhood plans, and if you think that this is one that should be on our list, we certainly would...
Absolutely, I've been positing this since starting on the commission, and, you know, you have the neighborhood also northeast, where on the Timsen Place side, where all that has, so you have the Union Prospect buildings that Douglas then built, then you have something over to the east, and then you have this, and then the rest of the triangle is sort of just a hodgepodge. So I would recommend that, yes, please, study the area. Thank you.
Definitely, I will transfer back the...
Then, of course, the question about what are we transferring in terms of the development rights?
I'll definitely get back to you on that.
Commissioner Sario?
Thank you Chair. Can you speak a little bit about the light manufacturing that the proposed development is thinking about, and how, what is the compatibility with the other proposed uses?
Definitely. They are justifying the rationale behind keeping the light manufacturing to diversify the economy of South Bronx. They mentioned to revitalize and preserve urban industrial land, and combine unique light manufacturing products with attractive retail spaces. They have approached to a couple of tenants already. They are looking at a woodworking shop and upholstery, and they also own a company that leases spaces for co-working, and that is what we, that we've heard for the target tenants for light manufacturing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, thank you very much for that. This item is now certified, and we will move on. Thank you for your efforts Chair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Sarah.
The fifth item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Ezra Mosher.
All right Ezra, welcome.
Hi, how's it going?
Good.
Good, good. Hopefully this will be a quick one. We'll see. Okay, great. So, this is a private application by Little Big Nell, sorry, Little Nell, Big Apple LLC for a special permit to allow the partial conversion of 10 Rockefeller Plaza in Manhattan Community District 5 to a transient hotel use. So, the project area is located at 10 Rockefeller Plaza, which is obviously part of the wider Rockefeller Center complex. The project area is split between a C5-3 and a C5-2.5 districts, both within the special Midtown district, these are high-density commercial districts, and again, the requested action is a special permit pursuant to what is now with ZEO 74152, this used to be known as 74802 prior to ZEO's adoption, to permit the, again, partial conversion of what's currently vacant commercial space to transient hotel floor area. So, as you can see from the land use area map here, the project area, which is outlined in purple, is a large zoning lot with multiple buildings located on it in the heart of, let me see, the Rockefeller Center complex in Midtown Manhattan's commercial core. As you can see, there is a sea of red surrounding it, which is, represents high-density commercial, with a handful of institutional uses scattered throughout. It's on a block bounded by Sixth Avenue to the west, Fifth Avenue to the east, West 48th Street to the south, and West 49th Street to the north. The development site, which is the building, 10 Rockefeller Plaza, is visible somewhat in the dashed black line in the middle of the project area, so that's the development site. And hopefully, this should be clearer on the next slide. So, here you can see, highlighted in yellow and with a bit of a, you know, transparent mask over it, the 10 Rockefeller Plaza building, this again is the development site, and this kind of shows it in the context of, you know, it's surrounding landmarks, the orientation arrow actually is a little bit incorrect, you're kind of looking more north by northeast in this, and you can see, again, 49th Street just north of it, it fronts primarily upon West 48th Street, and it's proximal to 30 Rock on the block to the north, and St. Patrick's Cathedral and Saks Avenue are nearby. So, pretty simple, here's the section view of the development site, with the proposed hotel area also highlighted in yellow. So, the hotel would occupy portions of the ground floor, the cellar and the subcellar levels, and then the entirety of the 7th through the 16th floors of the building, again, highlighted in yellow and stippled on the map here. It would result in approximately 131,000 zoning square feet of floor area, which results in 136 rooms. It also would have business centers, spa facilities, event spaces, things that are, you know, relatively typical of a hotel of this nature. And so, here is a ground floor plan, which shows a relatively de minimis lobby portion for the hotel, highlighted again in yellow here. There, the applicant plans to provide a lay-by lane for drop-offs, but that would be in a DOT parking lane, there would be no impingement on the sidewalk there. So, the actions needed to facilitate the project are a special permit pursuant to new Section 74152, and again, this will allow the conversion of vacant office space to a transient hotel. The findings of the hotel special permit are here, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thanks Ezra. Okay, let me see if there are questions. All right. Ezra, that's it. No questions for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Quick, go ahead.
You answered them all, you were right, it was quick, and we appreciate it. This item is now certified, and we will move on to the next item on today's agenda, which is our pre-hearing reviews.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens Community District 1. Our presenter on Zoom is Derek Chastain.
Hello, good afternoon. This application was certified on March 4th and is now back for pre-hearing. Next slide please. This is a private application by 3117191Z LLC in the Astoria neighborhood of Queens Community District 1 to facilitate the development of a new five-story residential building with 26,500 total square feet, consisting of 35 total dwelling units, including nine income-restricted units and 15 accessory parking spaces. Next slide please. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment from an existing R 5B zoning district to an R 6B zoning district, and a related zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area with option 1. Next slide please. The application was certified by the department on March 4th, 2024, and on May 21st, 2024, Queens Community Board 1 voted 32 in favor and 2 against a recommendation of approval. Next slide please. On Thursday, June 27th, 2024, the Queens Borough President will hold a hearing on this application and submit a recommendation, and the applicant representative will be here on Wednesday to address any and all questions raised by the commission. This concludes my presentation, and I'm ready for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday, unless there's other questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Thank you very much.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 6. Our presenter is David Weissglas.
Hello David. This is not the right one, it should be 150 Mill Street.
Yeah, we're going to pull up 150 Mill Street. Give us one sec.
All right, good afternoon Commissioners. This is the 150 Mill Street rezoning application, returning for pre-hearing, public hearing will be this Wednesday. This is certified on March 4th at the review session. The applicant for this project is BP Mill Street LLC. Project is located in the Red Hook neighborhood in Brooklyn Community District 6. This is in Council District 38, which is the district of Council member Alexa Aviles, and the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from an M11 district to an M15 zoning district. These actions will facilitate a 10-story, approximately 64,000-square-foot development. This includes retail use proposed as a supermarket at the ground floor and the cellar, community facility uses at the second and third floors, and office uses above. No parking is proposed as part of the development, as none is required. I will note briefly that since the application was certified, the applicant has informed DCP that they do plan to include light manufacturing within the proposed development, and the applicant can speak to that more on Wednesday. Here we can see the project's location, as well as some nearby land uses. While the project is located within the borders of the Southwest Brooklyn IBZ, or Industrial Business Zone, the specific site is directly bordered by community facility uses, retail uses, and residential. Specifically, you can see the Strong Place for Hope daycare facility is directly adjacent to the development site to the west, while a residential and retail building is located to the south of the development site. The NYCHA Red Hook houses are located just across Quentin Street to the west. Community Board 6 held a hearing on April 10th and recommended approval with the following condition. The condition was that the applicant and local community-based organizations, or CBOs, will prepare a letter or memorandum of understanding outlining the CBA's inclusions. The applicant will continue to dialogue with the local CBOs throughout the ULR process. The Borough President held a public hearing on the application on April 16th, and the Borough President recommends disapproval of the application, citing the continued erosion of industrial jobs, particularly within the IBZ, as well as concerns about the enforced...
of industrial jobs, particularly within the IBZ, as well as concerns about the enforceability of the MOU requested by the community board to ensure industrial space within the project. This concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. So we will pick this one up on Wednesday. We'll see if there's any questions for the department before we do. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So thank you for the update in terms of the willingness to include industrial. Have you seen anything? Has the department received any evidence or anything that we can review in that regard to understand what that's about?
Uh, we just received a updated plan set.
Gotcha.
Just received it late last week, so I didn't have the opportunity to include it in your briefing package, but I know the applicant can present on Wednesday.
Okay, great. Another quick, thank you, appreciate it. Another quick question for the department. So in the, in the comments, the Borough President is quoting testimony that they received from the Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Corporation. Is it possible to request that so that we can, so the commission can review what that testimony was?
Certainly, and I do believe the applicant can speak to their communications on Wednesday about what's come of that discussion.
Appreciate it, but if you can request the actual document, I would like to read it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
What did they vote? I think I missed that part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What did the community board vote?
Yeah, the community board recommends approval with conditions. And basically, one condition, which is that, I don't know if I have the exact wording here, but it was on the slide, with the condition basically, to summarize, that the applicant would have a memorandum of understanding or CBA to ensure that there's industrial space in the project area. Here we go. I think it's on my screen. There we go. It's up on the screen here. So it was that the applicant--
I missed that, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you so much. I had asked some questions when it was before us for certification in March.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you had, or if they had done anything to demonstrate more carefully where the drop-off entry for the ambulatory care was gonna be?
They, so, uh, so what they had told me is they are requesting, and again, they can, you know, speak to this a little bit more clearly on Wednesday, but what they've informed us is that they are going to request from DOT that there be clear drop-off along the entire, like, length of that block, basically, both for supermarkets as well as for the ambulatory.
Okay, can you show us that visual again?
Uh, yes, I believe I can. So I'd have to check my notes to see if they said it was across Mill Street or along under the expressway, but I think if I can get a better image, actually, that might have been the best image we've got. Yes, I'm not sure if they're requesting along Mill Street or under the expressway there, but I do know that they've told us that they plan to reach out to DOT and get, basically, block off dedicated service for both the ambulatory care facility as well as for people picking up, dropping off supermarkets, things like that.
Okay, um, and if they don't get that, I assume that the environmental review was done without that. Is that fair?
Uh, that is correct. I'm not sure, actually, if we take the specific lanes into account for the environmental review. I'm not sure. Yeah, I would need to check on that. This, the information I just got from the applicant last week as well, so.
Um, so if you would let them know, that's still my concern about where the ambulatory drop-offs would be, particularly since cars tend to wait there.
Certainly.
And if it's on the side route of the Gowanus Expressway, that's a problem.
Right.
Um, and my second question, then, was about the freight lobby and how the trucks, do they pull in and how that was gonna work?
They've told me they are interested in exploring that and explaining that on Wednesday.
Okay, that's it for me, then.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, regarding the office space, this would, floors four through 10, this would just be spec office space, or?
Uh, I haven't gotten detail on the specific office space use.
Then it is speculative. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Questions?
Okay, we will pick this one up for public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, let's move on to the next item.
The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 10. Our presenter is Kyra Cuevas.
Hello, Kyra.
Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Grotnick.
Good afternoon.
You should be seeing my presentation sometime soon. But as you know, I will be presenting a private application for a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment at 250-86th Street for a pre-hearing that you see over here. You first heard about this project proposal on April 1st, 2024. This is a private application by Dr. Helen Kim to bring her future medical office at 250-86th Street into compliance. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from an R-3-2 district in the Special Bay Ridge District to an R-6B, and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area to facilitate the compliance of a two-story mixed residential building with a proposed community facility use. No physical development is proposed as part of these actions. This project is located in Community District 10 in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. As you can see, the orange area shows nine of affected lots, where the yellow area shows the project site for Dr. Helen Kim's office. As shown in the previous slide, the surrounding area includes low residential use amplified by the Special Bay Ridge District. This application was referred out to the community board for 60 days. During that time, the community board met and voted to disapprove this application. The majority of board members voted against the proposal, with zero in favor and one member abstaining. Community board members expressed their concerns in a resolution, stating that the application is not consistent with the street preservation indicated within the Special Bay Ridge District. The proposed zoning would allow for a larger bulk and higher building heights within the project area. The city of yes for housing opportunity would permit a greater FAR in all districts, including this one, and consideration was not given to the possibility of combining lots. Additionally, the rezoning could potentially open the expansion of a community facility footprint. The Borough President held a hearing on June 17th, and I have an update. They did provide a recommendation on the evening of June 21st, and Borough President Reynoso recommended the approval of this application with a recommendation that the applicant continues to conduct outreach to the adjacent owners within the project area. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. This one will be up for public hearing on Wednesday, and we will be ready. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. Okay, let's move on, Sarah. Thank you.
The ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments, special permits, authorizations, a revocable consent, CPC certification, modification of a previously approved large-scale, and a cancellation of a previously approved restrictive declaration in Manhattan Community District Eight. Our presenter is Aska Mahoudin.
Hi, Aska.
This is a private application by Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center, or MSK, to facilitate a 31-story hospital building at 1233 York Avenue in the Lenox Hill neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District Eight. The applicant is requesting a number of actions, including a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, a special permit and authorization, revocable consent, a curb cut certification, cancellation of a restrictive declaration, and modifications to a large-scale community facility development site plan and zoning calculations. This application was previously presented and certified at the April 29th review session. This site provides an aerial view of the surrounding area with north at the top. MSK's Upper East Side campus between East 66th and 69th Streets is within a large-scale community facility development outlined here in yellow. The development site is located at 1233 York Avenue with its frontage along York Avenue between 68th Street and 67th Street, and across the street from Rockefeller University. The existing MSK campus was facilitated through a mix of as-of-right developments, BSA actions, and CPC actions. Side of the proposed new hospital pavilion is outlined in pink. The applicant is proposing a 31-story MSK pavilion to be built on the south campus along York Avenue. The maximum zoning envelope would have the overall height limited to 594 feet, and the maximum developable floor area would be 641,580 square feet. The pavilion would provide 28 operating and procedural suites with 106 inpatient beds located on nine floors. In addition, there would be four clinical support floors and five mechanical floors distributed throughout the building. The proposed development will connect with the existing Memorial Hospital via a patient bridge over East 67th Street, and an existing 263 space below a great parking garage is proposed to remain with some improvements to circulation. The pavilion's main entrance will be along York Avenue, but vehicular access to the hospital will be through a one-way drive-through with an entrance on East 66th Street towards East 67th Street. In total, five new curb cuts will provide a connection with the proposed development, two new curb cuts on East 66th Street for a mandatory ambulance bay, and an entrance to the internal drive-through, three new curb cuts on East 67th Street, one for an exit to the new internal drive-through, one serving of three new service berths, and one for the parking garage entrance and exit. To facilitate the movement of patients and staff between the existing and proposed hospital buildings, MSK is proposing a two-story patient bridge over East 67th Street. This slide shows an illustrative rendering of the proposed bridge as it's conceptually approved by the Public Design Commission. This patient bridge is needed for the efficient and safe transportation of patients and staff moving between the new surgical suites and inpatient beds in the MSK pavilion, and the large footprint of diagnostic and treatment facilities in Memorial Hospital and the remainder of the main block. Looking now at the overall large-scale community facility development site plan, no changes are proposed for the north campus, and all developable floor area has been utilized on this block. No development is proposed on the main campus, and the remaining floor area from the 2001 approvals, which was restricted through a restrictive declaration, is proposed to be utilized for the development on the south campus. Finally, moving to the south campus, if the MSK pavilion is developed as proposed, there will be no remaining developable floor area left within large-scale community facility The applicant is requesting a number of actions to facilitate this development. The first action is a zoning map amendment to rezone the south campus mid-block from R-8 to R-9 district. The second action is a zoning text amendment to amend ZR 7943 to allow the commission to permit modifications to lock coverage and signage within hospital or hospital-related large-scale community facility development located within the boundaries of Community District Eight. The third action is a special permit pursuant to ZR 7943 as amended to permit bulk modifications to enable the large floor plates necessary of hospitals. The request waivers include heightened setback, lock coverage, and signage. The fourth action is an authorization pursuant to ZR 7921 to modify bulk regulations for development within a large scale. The requested modifications include the distribution of about 264,900 square feet of unused floor area from the main block to the south block without regard for zoning lot lines within large-scale boundary. The fifth action is requesting a modification of the previously authorized large-scale community facility development to reflect the proposed changes to the approved site plan and zoning calculations. The sixth action is for the cancellation of the restrictive declaration, which places restrictions on the use of floor area generated as part of the 2001 rezonings until such time as the commission could further review the plans for a proposed hospital building. The seventh action is a CPC certification to allow more than one curb cut on a narrow street frontage. And the last requested action relates to the revocable consent application also filed with Department of Transportation. Revocable consent application is reviewed by the commission when it has been determined to have a land use impact, such as in this case with the pedestrian bridge over Eighth Street. A notice of completion for a draft-up environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was issued on April 26, 2024. The DEIS identified significant adverse impacts with respect to shadows, transportation, construction, and construction noise. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be further explored in the final environmental impact statement. On May 8, 2024, Community Board Eight voted to approve the application with conditions. These conditions cover a variety of topics, such as providing housing, changes to proposed building design, height and location of mechanicals, sustainability, noise, air quality, construction, traffic, shadows, community engagement, and lastly, to ensure community benefits agreement to improve community infrastructure, such as local parks and schools. The detailed community board resolution has been provided to you as part of your briefing package. This resolution was approved with 24 votes in favor, 11 opposed, and one abstaining. On June 14, 2024, the Borough President recommended approval of the application with the following conditions: that MSK worked to mitigate traffic conditions during construction, including improved wayfinding and active management of parking, to help alleviate the current backup from queuing to enter the parking garage and advance the proposed improvements in the MSK pavilion project; and that MSK further explored the anticipated need for employee and fellow housing and presented a plan to ensure that any future demands present present as little effect on the local housing market as possible. In summary, the applicant is seeking a number of actions to facilitate a 31-story hospital building in the Lenox Hill neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District Eight. The proposed building would have a maximum zoning envelope of 594 feet and a floor area of 641,580 square feet. The proposed also includes a patient bridge connecting the building with Memorial Hospital over East 67th Street. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Great, thanks, Aska. Okay, we will pick this one up for a public hearing on Wednesday. Anything for Aska before then? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Great. All right, Sarah.
Future votes. Future votes for Wednesday, June 26th. Staff have prepared reports for 30-33 Avenue V rezoning and 197 Berry Street rezoning. On 197 Berry Street, there was testimony in your weekend materials. Next is 500 Kent Avenue. Amrita is here to present a recommendation.
Hello, Amrita.
Hit the button at the bottom of the microphone.
Got it. The department supports this application for a zoning map amendment and zoning special permits. Together, these actions would facilitate the development of a vacant site along the Williamsburg waterfront with a new 23-story, approximately 576,000 square foot, commercial building with 49,000 square feet of publicly accessible open space. The department is pleased that the project would activate a former utility site that has remained vacant for the last 15 years, with new space for job-generating uses compatible with the development in the surrounding area, and would provide waterfront public open space that can connect to and complete the southern end of the Williamsburg waterfront esplanade. The department believes that the zoning map amendment to change an M-31 zoning district to an M-15 zoning district is appropriate. M-31 zoning districts are intended for noxious uses with generally lower job densities and could inhibit the expansion of tertiary job clusters in growing neighborhoods such as South Williamsburg. M-31 districts have relatively low performance standards and allow for unenclosed industrial uses, which could pose potential use conflicts with neighboring mixed-use and residential buildings immediately to the north and east of the development site, and likely limit the creation of waterfront access and future connectivity to planned public access abutting the site. The department believes that the greater variety of uses allowed and the reduced off-street parking and loading facilitated by the M-15 district are appropriate. The department also believes that the density and heights allowed under the M-15 zoning district are appropriate and are similar to the heights and densities which exist and are proposed in the surrounding area that include 22- to 25-plus story developments along the waterfront, with newer buildings in the Navy Yard proposed to reach heights of nearly 400 feet. The location along the waterfront, the provision of waterfront public access areas, as well as the adjacency to nearby parks, provide ample access to open space, light, and air, affording additional relief for the proposed bulk. The department recognizes the citywide commercial vacancy trends and difficulties associated with tenanting office spaces, though acknowledges the local demand in South Williamsburg for commercial spaces has remained resilient, with recent examples of new commercial construction at 18 Spencer Street, 31 Spencer Street, and 347 Flushing Avenue. However, the department is still concerned about the long-term viability of new commercial construction, and recommends that the applicant develop a robust tenanting strategy that responds to both local and citywide trends, and can support and build off the ongoing job growth and expansion at the Brooklyn Navy Yard, and consider the inclusion of compatible light industrial uses, art spaces, and small-scale production uses. The department notes that the development site's proximity to the city-subsidized Brooklyn Navy Yard, which has plans for phased new development across the campus to accommodate approximately 4.6 million square feet, and recognize--
to accommodate approximately 4.6 million square feet, and recognizes that these uses are complementary to those permitted under the proposed M15 zoning district. Furthermore, the department appreciates that the proposed development and its site plan features are focused on improving overall connectivity and seamlessly tie into the anticipated developments at the eastern edge of the Navy Yard where all of the Navy Yard's publicly accessible waterfront open space would be located. The department believes that the modifications to the waterfront bulk regulations are necessary to facilitate amassing that's, um, responsive to the unique lot configuration and to enable a commercial building in line with best practices for modern office construction such as generous floor-to-ceiling heights, efficient, well-organized floor plates with flexible layouts, and provision of outdoor amenity spaces. The department is pleased that the proposed development employs a range of site and building scale flood mitigation strategies and, uh, commends the applicant to, uh, commends the applicant's consideration of future flood risk and inclusion of additional freeboard of four feet above the base flood elevation. The department recognizes that the provision of the public parking garage is intended to accommodate the project-generated parking demand and offset the need for utilizing, uh, on-street parking spaces elsewhere in the neighborhood. The department is pleased that the proposed actions would support the creation of new job-generating space at a location that is at the intersection of the well-established Williamsburg neighborhood to the north and the Navy Yard, a strong industrial jobs hub to the south, and recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Amrita. Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Sarah, what's next?
Next is Bronx Metro North. Michael is here to present a recommendation.
Hello, Michael, welcome.
Good afternoon. Afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, and we'll get this up for you here.
Okay, um, so good afternoon, this is the pre-vote presentation for Bronx Metro North. Uh, we'll give a recommendation and, uh, first quickly summarize the actions. Um, oh, it's a clicker. Okay, um, so, uh, in summary, these, uh, actions relate to zoning maps, uh, zoning map, zoning text, and city map amendments. Um, these actions span three Bronx community districts, districts 9, 10, and 11, and will facilitate the development of some 7,500 units of new housing, including up to 1,900 units of new permanently income-restricted housing in an area of the city that has seen little such growth. Uh, they will also support the growth of some 2.5 million square feet of commercial and community facilities and are estimated to create some 10,000 jobs. Um, just a reminder about the, uh, the sort of two flavors of, uh, uh, City Planning Commission modifications. We have commodifications that were already reflected in the FEIS, which, um, include the removal of the reference to the creation of the M11A district, which was, uh, created by the now-adopted zoning-for-economic-opportunity text amendment, as well as, um, some minor clarifications throughout the text. We also have a modification that's reflected in the technical memorandum that you should all have in your package today. We previewed this at the previous presentation a couple of weeks ago, and this relates to the, uh, 40-foot change in the, the southern boundary of the C43 district on the, um, Montefiore Einstein Campus. So that, um, is now in your package. Um, just a, you know, very quick reminder of the context here. Again, uh, the East Bronx today lacks, uh, regional rail access. Tomorrow, new rail service will mean greater accessibility to the city and the region. This means more choices for where Bronxites may choose to work, live, and enjoy themselves, as well as significantly improved connections from the region to critical medical, research, and jobs institutions within the borough. New service also represents a unique opportunity to plan together to thoughtfully integrate these new stations into the fabric of the communities they'll serve. Over the past six years, the Department of City Planning has worked with the MTA, community members, area institutions, and many others to envision what it might mean to grow thoughtfully around this new service. This work is included developing a joint vision for what it means to create new front doors to these Bronx communities and a world-class entry point to one of the city's most important job centers at Morris Park. It also means strengthening job centers by allowing them to grow while also allowing for the growth of housing and retail, uh, needed for the success and growth of our Bronx employers. That means mending seams between communities created by a history of inadequate public infrastructure and facilities, as well as allowing for a mix of housing and retail near new rail service in areas of the borough that have seen little such growth over the years. So in short, these actions, the series of city map, uh, zoning text, and city map amendments, um, that are before you, uh, we, uh, as an agency feel are appropriate, and together we believe these will help to ensure that the future stations are thoughtfully integrated into the fabric of the communities they'll serve, that longstanding gaps in housing production, including affordable housing near the station areas, are addressed, that institutions and employers are poised for growth and success, and that Bronxites are well-positioned to take advantage of these opportunities. And with that, we recommend approval.
Great, thank you, Michael, and, uh, thank you to you, uh, to Paul and to the entire Bronx, uh, team for everything that you have done to, uh, to get us to this point. Obviously, this is a, this is the first, uh, neighborhood plan, uh, in this administration to get to the moment of vote of the City Planning Commission. Um, so it's particularly exciting, and, uh, and we appreciate all of the efforts that you all have done, and, uh, and let me go to Commissioner Cerulo.
Thank you, Chair. Michael, and I, obviously, I agree immensely with the Chair's remarks about all of you and the team here. I have a question. In the first slide, this goes to the reference of the change in the report because of zoning for economic opportunity.
Yeah.
Just, it's, I just, this may be a silly question, but, so, the, the reason the language was no longer necessary, just explain that to me. I'm trying to process this for a minute. My, my concern, I'll give you my concern first, and then maybe, then it may make sense. The application itself included this provision that now is no longer necessary because of the adoption of zoning for economic opportunity.
Correct.
Is there no benefit to continuing to reference it and the fact that it was no longer necessary to act upon because of CEO versus eliminating any reference to it?
Yeah.
Which if you look at the original, unless the application removed the language itself, versus if you looked at the app, you would see it, but you wouldn't see the reference to it in the report in any way?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. So the City Planning Commission reports, you might not have had time yet to read all 85 pages of the survey report.
Clearly, I have not. Thank God I didn't pretend to have done that at this point.
Yeah, so thi- this is a, a new one. So the front portion of the report before the considerations absolutely refers to the creation of the M11A. It's also in the docket that's included at the front of the presentation. It's only in the considerations in the docket at the end of the report that it's removed, and its removal is noted within the, uh, the considerations.
Yes, it's coming back to me now. I, 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 okay. I just, no, I appreciate that, because my concern was that it disappears in the explanation, and if someone looked at the two pieces at the same time, there would be a disconnect to it.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that, and I look forward to reading it myself.
Yeah, yeah, enjoy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great, all right, thanks. Thank you very much, Michael. We'll pick this one up with a vote on Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay. Also, uh, also for consideration on Wednesday is 601 Washington Street Parking Authorization, uh, 125 Rockland Avenue, which is a SNAD authorization, and Stan Island Community District 2, 255 Benedict Road, which is a SNAD CPC cert, uh, certification, in Stan Island Community District 2. And lastly, for consideration on Wednesday, 50 and 54 Cedar Cliff Road Renewal in Stan Island Community District 1. This is a renewal of a previously approved, uh, special hillside authorization. Future votes for July 10th, 2024. Uh, for consideration on Wednesday, July 10th is a, is the, um, Hercher Building, uh, now the Crown Building. Uh, this is a report regarding a landmark designation in Manhattan Community District 5. Um, briefing materials were included in your weekend materials. Okay. Post-hearing follow-ups. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have 712 Myrtle Avenue, which had a public hearing at the June 10th public meeting. There was a follow-up memo in your materials, and Demetrius is joining us on Zoom if there's any questions also.
Great. Any questions for Demetrius? No, okay. Thank you. Does he have a, he doesn't have a presentation, right?
I think we have a slide, um, the...
Yes, um, I can speak to the slide super quickly. Um, it's just to indicate that the department supports the application, which would facilitate a new nine-story mixed-use building with 41 dwelling units, 10 of which would be permanently income-restricted, um, that we feel the zoning district change from M12 to R7 DC24, um, is appropriate for the area and addresses, uh, development potential to the area while also addressing the character. And as also in your briefing package, the applicant team prepared a letter in response to the public hearing and states that the owners have not yet engaged in discussions regarding relocation for the current tenants. However, they, in recommendations for the community board, they will be making a good effort, good faith efforts, sorry, to assist with relocation as the time arises.
Great, thank you, Demetrius. Thank you for that. Okay, excellent.
For Tibbetts Brook, uh, Daylighting Easement Acquisition, uh, which had a public hearing at the June 10th public meeting, there's a follow-up memo in your materials, and, uh, Brenna is available on Zoom should there be any questions. Okay. Uh, lastly, uh, for post-hearing follow-ups, uh, for Princess Point Development and Princess Point Investing Amendment, um, both had a public hearing at the June 10th public meeting. The applicants are preparing a follow-up, uh, letter, um, on the private application, and both items will be discussed at the next review session, but Kari is here should there be any questions today.
Okay, all right, I think we're good for the moment. Thank you, Sarah. Is there anything left on our agenda for today?
No, Chair Grotnick.
Okay, well, with that, uh, thank you all, uh, for your time and attention today. Thank you to the staff of the Department of City Planning, and, uh, we will see you all Wednesday morning. Thanks.
The time is 3:38 PM.